Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman at Large George Payne.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this special time of year, Lord, where we get to honor your birth. And thank you for the many things that you've done for us, Lord. Help us to remember those around us that are less fortunate, Lord Jesus. And Lord, may people's love shine through to each other. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, a second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of travel for the Mississippi Municipal League Convention, January nine through eleven. In the past, the city has traveled there for the conference. There's one in the summer, one in the winter. All the cities go there. A lot of educational classes, a lot of networking, that kind of thing. There's a legislative day where officials go to the state legislature, so it's a very productive trip for the city of South Haven. So is there a motion to approve travel for that event?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, a second of Alderman Payne. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a lease of city property. City Attorney, Mr. Nick Manley.
Now, this lease of city property is just a renewal of the lease for thirteen-twenty Brookhaven Drive. It's the same, basically the same lease we've had with the entity for eighty-four hundred dollars per year. It is a three-year lease until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and the value is based on the two appraisals that were previously received a couple of years ago when we, or the average of two appraisals when we originally leased the property. So tonight, need authorization for the mayor to sign the lease agreement with True Word Ministries for the thirteen-hundred-twenty, eighteen, thirteen-hundred-twenty Brookhaven Drive address.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, a second of Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our commercial vehicle ordinance. We know we've discussed this a couple of times. We went back, took the direction of the full board, back into committee again, and revised this ordinance again, so.
Mr. Mayor, we got a couple, like, two other things in front of that.
Okay, that's my, okay, that's my fault. Thank you for pointing that out. My sheet is, that's my fault. Forgive me for that. So we'll get to that. Next on the, on the agenda is a contract with PBJ, Happy Day Shows for Spring Fest.
This contract with PBJ for Happy Day, or Happy Day Shows is a contract with the vendor who hosts the games and the, or provides the games and the rides. The compensation for the city is thirty-five percent of the grocery receipts, along with seventy-five dollars per game vendor and four hundred dollars per food vendor. Spring Fest will be April twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, but the contract will be the fifteenth through the twenty-ninth to give them time to set up and break down. So tonight, we need authorization for the mayor to sign the contract with Happy Day, Happy Days PBJ for Spring Fest for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, a second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is our resolution for liens.
Yeah, this resolution will authorize liens and/or tax assessments to be filed on those properties that were cut, in accordance with Mississippi Code twenty-one nineteen-eleven.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, a second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties who would like to speak? Hearing, or seeing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, as I've started to say, the commercial vehicle ordinance is next on the agenda. This is the item that we talked about in two prior meetings. After the direction from the board last meeting, we, the committee got back together, and we took into account the request of the board, so we tweaked that, and so that's where we are now. So I'll read the ordinance. We're still using the same chart, the classifications based on gross vehicle weight. The only thing we changed was the wording, and y'all have the word, I don't need to, or do I need, I don't need to read that. Can everybody, does everybody have that?
We do.
And so is there a motion to go ahead and open the discussion, then we'll proceed as follows?
So moved.
Second.
A motion of Alderman Gallagher, a second of Alderman Wheeler. So we'll open the floor for discussion. Share your thoughts on that, and let's try to come to an agreement tonight on this.
I thought last meeting we did the excluding class four through eight, and we admitted, we allowed class three, but we omitted box trucks. That's what I remember.
Well, what we, what we did is we vote, we voted to do what you're saying, but allow, with the exception of heavy-duty pickups. So it is what you're saying. It's four through eight is prohibited, but we wanted to go back to the drawing board on heavy-duty pickups.
Well, this one says no commercial vehicle classified as a class three or greater, except for trucks, heavy-duty truck.
Right, that, yeah, I'm, yeah, correct. Yes, the only thing in question from three to eight was a heavy-duty pickup is what we voted on last time.
Yeah, well, the, the issue I have with that is some of the trucks that are class, are going to be classified as a class three will not look any different from one that's a class two. May have the same bed, but the one that's class two could have a ladder rack on it that's above the roof line. But the one that's class three cannot, just based on the fact that even though it may look identical, because, you know, we're talking about, you know, the difference between, I'm, I'm going to use my Ford analogy again, the difference between F-two-fifty and F-three-fifty, from appearance-wise, they really don't look that much different, but the F-three-fifty is going to be classified as a class three. It can't have anything above the roof line of, of the pickup cab, but if I had a class two, I could.
Yeah, no, that's, that's true. I think the logic there, and, and we can amend that, but I think the logic there is, you know, when you look, when you have your, your vehicles that have the, like, a painter's ladder or electrician and stuff like that, generally, those are going to be class one or class two vehicles. Generally, if you have a heavy-duty pickup that's been amended, it's a heavy-duty truck for a reason, because it has the capacity to do things that require more, more ability, more, more power than you would have in a pickup truck. So it's, it's not likely that you would, you would see, you know, again, those artisan-type things there.
I think there's going to be a chance for some folks to have a class three, and it fall within this, where, like I say, it, it may look identical to one that's a class two with the same equipment on the back, but they're not going to be allowed to have it in their driveway, and it's really not a whole lot of difference. Yeah, it has the capacity to, to carry more, but it is not being used for that.
Yeah, you're saying that it's still, there is a possibility that somebody could be using the heavy-duty truck for this, yeah.
An F-three-fifty, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, and that's why I think last time we were talking about cutting it off, you know, no class four or higher, because that's when you're getting into some of the bigger, heavier-duty ones that are going to be, you know, with a bed on the back that's going to be stacked, you know, incredibly tall.
What about if we, if we, on that, have, rather than make it even with the cab, we give it?
Twenty-four inches?
Twenty-four inches, baby?
The, these are, and I appreciate that, these are things that we did talk about in the committee. Let me answer one, we didn't answer your question first. So the way, do you have the minutes, Andrea? The way, the way I understood the motion last meeting is that we were all in agreement that, that we wanted to reconsider heavy-duty pickups, but that three through eight, we're going to prohibit. Is that not the way y'all understood it?
Then we did four through eight, and we allowed three to be in. That's what I remember, and I think I was the one that said it, actually.
Do you have the minutes? Well, either way, we, we can go with what it is, but, so y'all are okay with?
Did four have box trucks on it? It does.
Well, three has box trucks, too.
Yeah, they both do. Okay. Well, we said three's in, we exclude box trucks.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
But then what you get into, again, from a practicality standpoint, is if you're excluding box trucks, but you're going to allow, you got a walk-in truck and a city delivery truck that are really the same thing, so you, just, we want to make it where it's easy or, or practical.
Well, I think a walk-in and a city delivery, but a box is a box. See, with that box on the back.
Well, that's what I'm saying, those three, you're eliminating, if you're, that's, it's saying the same thing, we are in a different way. If you're against the box truck and you consider the walk-in, the city delivery the same thing, you're prohibiting class three with the exception of a heavy-duty pickup.
Right, but it can have what we want to put, I, I'd, I'd like to say it in there. Have the heavy-duty pickup truck, but you can allow, you know, like, ladder rack or whatever, being at least twenty-four inches.
Okay.
Give them twenty-four inches leeway over the bed.
Okay, well, let me, let me tell you this, and I think this solves all three of these concerns. If we talk, there's two ways, we had two alternate solutions. And again, just to remind everybody, the reason that that's in there is what we're trying to prohibit is not that ladder or anything like that. What we're trying to stay away from, and again, hey, keep using the example, is the chicken truck, okay? You, you don't want a heavy-duty pickup that's been converted
Sure.
to something that is, meets, that then becomes really a four through eight.
Sure.
By changing the bed. So what you could do is this, you could take what's on there now and really simplify this, and you could, y'all, hang with me, you could say, no commercial vehicle classified as a class three or greater, except for a heavy-duty pickup, then strike through everything about the bed and pickup, or any trailer that exceeds sixteen feet in length. Neither of those should be parked or stored in a residence or street, and that, that really shortens it and simplifies it. And the way we would do that is we would, we would interpretate that on a day-to-day basis. If you've taken a heavy-duty pickup and you've put one of these, you've put a tow truck bed on it, or you've put a, it's no longer a pickup. Because if you look up the definition of a, of a pickup truck, a pickup truck is a truck that has a pickup bed on the back. So do y'all see what I'm saying? We could just, we could handle that on a daily basis, and we could just have our code enforcement officers have that interpretation. Now, if they go to the court and the court reviews that differently, we got to come back and do some more work. But if we simplify it, that takes away the problem of measuring. We, what we didn't want to do is, we don't want the code enforcement officers out there saying, hmm, let me get my tape measure out, you know, this sticks up six inches above the bed, you know, then it becomes, you know, it's, it's difficult to apply.
Well, he's either going to have to do that, or he's going to have to have the owner open up the door and look at the safety certification label inside the door jamb to see what the GBWR is and see what class it is.
Right, we don't want.
You could take a class two and make a chicken truck.
I mean, you could.
Yeah, but I will tell you this, we did some further research on that, and there are many of the things that change the beds to where they would be an undesirable, and that, I think we all agree on that, still have the same, it doesn't change the GBWR.
Right, I agree. No, I completely agree.
So, so that's really not a, I mean, you have to have.
That was my concern with saying, okay, it could be a pickup, well, you can change the bed, put a, you know, utility bed on the back. It's still going to be, but it doesn't change the class, because it's rated to carry that anyway.
Certain, correct.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that if you're just, if you don't address that, then you're, or saying, making an exception for pickups, then you're, somebody could change a heavy-duty pickup to be, if you're looking at the chart, like, if you're not looking at the, the weight of the vehicle, if you're looking at the, I hate to be too simple, but the pictures of it, you would say, oh, well, that, that, that's disqualified. But I think if we do it this way, it really simplifies it, and we would just administer it from a day-to-day basis that, with the assumption that if they've amended the bed on a pickup truck, it's no longer a pickup truck.
Unless they box that way, I mean, they sell, they sell class three trucks with utility beds already on them.
We're not, well, we're not saying a, we're not saying necessarily a, we're saying that if it's no longer a pickup. So like, what we're trying to stay away from is, like, the things that are shown in the photos, when you go, y'all, you're, y'all are all, or you're saying that you don't want box trucks, so you, you list those things there. So we would, we would take the position that if it is, it's not a pickup, if it does not have a pickup bed on the back, and then, like I said, if it goes to court, that doesn't stand up in court, then we got to, we got to revisit this again. But I'm, I'm agreeing with you that we can simplify and take out all that about the height, you know, protruding above the cab and all. We can take that out, but that's the risk you get into if somebody that has amended the bed, and it's not just a ladder for an electrician or a painter, then we're going to be back talking about it again. Am I making, does that make sense? Let me say that again if it's not. Obviously, it's not.
No, I, I get it, but I, I'm with the utility bed, I'm fine with the utility bed that is, you know, six, eight, ten, fourteen inches, whatever, above the cab. I just don't want, I don't want to amend, omit that out.
Right, I, I'm confused by exactly what you mean when you say a pickup bed.
Pickup bed is a pickup truck, like, a standard pickup bed truck that you, if you go buy a pickup, it's got a bed.
You used to ride in when you were going to practice.
Standard, I think, I think that's, everybody would, in general, even a court, I believe, would, they would say a pickup, when you say a pickup bed, what does that mean? It means a standard bed, like, in my truck, or, or the other trucks that are out in the parking lot right here.
Right, but I thought we did want to allow, like, a utility bed.
Yeah.
Like, for tools and, you know, for somebody that was an independent contractor.
It is, but that's the ones, those are one in, I mean, those already qualify as one or, as one or two.
No, but you can have class three that have those beds.
Yeah.
Have a utility.
I think that was.
Well, y'all, y'all are answer, you're, now you're saying the re, that's the reason that we keep going back to, to addressing an amended pickup bed, you know, because of that, so.
Why don't we just say, to make, like, just make it simple, just say, it could have, it could be a heavy-duty pickup with any bed, as long as it doesn't exceed twenty-four inches above the cab height.
Well, because then your tow trucks would do that.
Well, your, your tow trucks are going to be lengthwise, and, you know, I mean, the only thing you're going to get on the three-fifties probably is going to be a, like, something that has a sling on the back of it, or it's one of those lift.
Well, and we can do that, Nick, when we were in our committee, Nick had, at one time, we talked about putting the same language, but instead of prohibiting something that extends higher than the roof of the cab, he had in there no more than four feet. So we could add, the only thing you get into is you're having your code enforcement officers having to measure that, but that can, we can do that.
When you say four feet, you mean total height, four feet?
Height above the cab, four feet.
That's a lot. I'm going to do twenty-four inches, I'm going to do that.
Hey, none of us want that.
Four feet's too many. Wait, let's go two feet. Let's go twenty-four, twenty-four inches, I think is plenty. That, that should get most of your. If we got somebody working for us to keep eyeballing two feet, we probably don't need that person working for us.
Okay, so y'all, y'all want to amend it and allow it, and, and all we would do is we would still address the bed, so we don't get into the arguing about what's a true pickup bed.
Right.
And, but then we would allow, instead of it being flush with the cab, we would allow it to be, go twenty-four inches above that.
Right.
Y'all in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Can we vote and solve it?
I think we.
Have y'all ever heard me let out a yahoo in a public board meeting?
Hey, y'all, I'll, I'll.
I may let out a yahoo if we vote for this.
I'll make the amended motion.
So the amendment, go ahead, Nick, what were you going to say?
Oh, we're just making, we're not voting the ordinance itself, go ahead.
Yeah, we were discussing it anyway. We're voting next meeting, right?
Well, it'd be, it'd be the first meeting in January in the park.
Okay.
We want, we want to hammer down what the ordinance is, yeah.
We're, we're agreeing, and we're going to make Nick write it again.
No, we're going to keep it simple now, that's fine. We're going, we're going to solve this tonight, so all, we're, we're going to keep it just like it is. But we're just, instead of it saying prohibiting a bed or equipment that extends higher than the roof of the cab, we're going to put no more than twenty-four inches above the roof of the cab.
Right.
Okay, that's what we're, that's what we're going to vote on. Are you making that motion, Alderman?
Thank you.
Alderman Wheeler's making it, Alderman Hoots the second? Is there any other discussion?
Let's do it.
Let's roll call this one.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Woohoo.
He must have some chicken trucks in your neighborhood or something.
I challenge everybody, and I'll, I'll, if y'all don't know this already, I'll cha, I'll educate you a little bit from my insurance experience. You may not know this, but South Mississippi is known for the, for the chicken business.
Oh, definitely.
And so I would encourage you.
I've seen a lot of summers in South Mississippi, so yes, I've.
State tournament in Morton, Mississippi, man.
Right, so I would encourage you, the next time, when you hit forty-nine, going south, I want you to pay attention and look for chicken trucks.
Oh, no, 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 they're everywhere.
And then when you do, you're probably going to text me and say, Mayor, I get it. I understand that. You will. But thank y'all. That, that motion carries, Andrea, so we're going to move on from the commercial vehicle ordinance. The next thing on our agenda is a resolution. Again, this is something we've talked about. We've got a resolution for a speed hump ordinance, and we'll go ahead and, can we have a motion? I, I have some things I want to share with the board, but is there a motion to open discussions for the speed hump ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
We got a motion of Alderman Kelly, a second of Alderman Gallagher. So again, what we did on this, from previous discussions, listened to everybody's comments, so we believe we got a solid ordinance here that, that the goals of this ordinance are to be cautious, the negative about speed humps is that they, or speed bumps were the liability. Humps and bumps are not the same thing. These are, these are safer. However, they achieve the same goal of, when you go over these things at a high rate of speed, you're going to be in trouble. You got to slow down when you go over these things. But what we don't want to do, the reason this is complicated, is you don't want to put speed humps all over the city, because there is a trade-off. You're slowing down your emergency vehicles when you put these humps out there. So I think we got to be real cautious where we use them. And like I said last meeting, the easiest thing would be to say, yeah, let's just, let's punt this, let's don't, let's don't use humps. But I really believe, and I know some of y'all expressed that you do, I really believe that humps can be effective in, in some key situations that are right now dangerous in our city. And, and last meeting, we talked about a couple of specific streets, but, so what this ordinance does, it accomplishes both goals. We're not going to have humps all over the city, we're going to be selective where we put those, but what we did is we have four criteria in order to determine where one would go. That, those four, the speed humps shall only be located on a residential collector's street or a street within a public park. The speed humps shall only be located on a street with a posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour or less. The speed humps shall only be located on a street where there's a high use by children and/or other pedestrians of the street, and the speed humps shall only be located on a street where the increase in unanticipated or unplanned traffic creates a hardship or danger for the residents or pedestrians who use the street. And those four things meet the goal. I mean, that, that will allow us to put them, you know, strategically in places where we have school kids crossing the street, where we have parks and, you know, people, when we say unanticipated traffic, I'll use Snowden as, it's a great example. So Snowden Lane, many, many, many years ago, that was Getwell. Getwell Road was Snowden Lane way back when. Well, after the new Getwell was done many, many years ago, Snowden Lane is just a little small, unused street pretty much, until Snowdon Grove Park came there. When the park came there, it's still kind of slow, but when development started occurring in the Snowden District, and especially now with the new developments that we have towards Goodman, now you have a lot of, and of course, the traffic on Getwell, you have people that were using it as a bypass, so they, instead of going down Getwell, they're hitting Snowden Lane, and they're hauling tail. I mean, they're going, they're going fifty miles an hour down Snowden Lane. You got kids, you got a, you know, Field of Dreams playgrounds there, you have pedestrians, kids all over the place, and, and it got to be dangerous. So with the humps that we have there now, So with the humps that we have there now, I can report to you that they are effective. I mean, we said we were gonna experiment there, they are effective, it's, it's helped us achieve that goal. And so I think we can use these things, and just like this, on, on, uh, areas where children are, are crossing the street, school kids, or parks, that kinda thing. And I think this, uh, ordinance is, is well written. I'm asking you to approve this ordinance tonight.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as written, as listed.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Kelly, is there any other discussion?
Uh, one of, okay, now, the, the ones they have over on Snowden Lane, yes, they work. And, and somebody in this room was speeding one day and hit one before they put the white marks on it, and you can't see it, by the way. That threw me out of my truck. I hadn't done it since, by the way, but I'll take that one ticket to go all right. Uh, one, we need to, to put those white marks down when they put the speed hump down.
Yeah, that's well said, and, and, uh, the ones that we put down first, that was the first ever speed hump in the history of South Haven.
And I hit it going.
So we wondered who that guy was, so you're that guy, right? You were that guy?
Also, uh.
The ordinance does require markings on it.
Yeah.
I see it requires it, and, and we put markings on it later, but when we first did it, it didn't have a mark.
Also, will we have signs, like a, a sign showing?
Speed hump ahead.
We, we can do, we can do both, but to an, answer one question at a time. The first one was done, it was the first speed hump that we put, so we put the hump down. Then the painting, the contractors weren't lined up right, where they, but now we've, we've, we've gone through that, we'll do them both together, so they'll be straight. We can put signs, the reason we didn't wanna, we don't wanna say that we're gonna do both is, um, sometimes it's overkill in certain situations. You already have children, signs there, so you don't want the children's signs to be, you don't want too many signs to, the more signs you put, the less effective they all become. So there's some situations where you want to note that there's children crossing there, that kinda thing, so it may not be necessary to have a sign there. Um, but we can do both, we can do a sign.
Is there any liability in not having the sign?
We talked about that, we have it marked, so we, um, Nick, I'm not gonna, you can answer that.
I think the more, more, more notice you give, the better, um, I don't think there's a certain liability for not having it. Obviously, you have protection, more protection if you do have it, but, um, obviously, your defense is always, you know, speeding, you don't have, um, issue there. But I think you need to have some marking there, which is the reason for the stripes, and if you had some, um, some signs there that would help, uh. But I don't think there's any such pathos if you wasn't a sign, we got that one.
And we're not saying we're not putting a sign, we just wanna leave that option for the reason I stated. But when you put the markings, the markings are very highly visible when you put those.
It only takes that one knucklehead.
I agree, I mean, I, I see the one on Snowden Lane very well, and I agree with Alderman Wheeler, uh, before the markings were there, they were, you didn't notice them, didn't say, oh. I'm not saying I ran over it real fast.
Well. Since we, since we got all the, all the publicity on this thing here, my phone's been ringing off the hook, uh, you know, uh. And so I spent two or three hours last night researching this stuff here, and, uh. One thing I did see is that there's a lot of lawsuits for not marking these things, they have to be heavily marked and that kinda stuff. Uh, you basically know, if somebody hits it at twenty-five miles an hour, it could, you know, that's too fast. They're gonna, I mean, you're, they're basically gonna have to come down to crawl across these things, they're, they're not designed to go twenty-five miles an hour.
No, no, we've actually tested that, you can, yeah, you can go over this thing twenty, I mean.
I did twenty-five over, yeah, today.
You could do twenty.
Well, okay.
And I'm not trying to rat out our alderman here, but if you had, if it threw your rent in the cab of your truck, you were going, you were going fast.
I, I'm just saying, you know, I was reading, I, you know, there, there's probably fifty pages about these things, the liability and the problems they have with this stuff. Uh, you know, uh, I like the idea of having them in parks, I like the idea of having them around schools. I don't like the idea of just coming over here and putting down some, you know, on Colonial Hills Drive yesterday, because, you know, a speeder's gonna speed up to it.
Did you not hear what I just said?
Yeah, I did, but you know, I would like to see us change a little bit of that ordinance where it says, you know, the committee's gonna present it till we read it into the minutes. I would like to see whenever they have a recommendation that comes before the board for us to vote on.
Yeah, we're not gonna do, I mean.
Well, I mean, if, you know, if we're not gonna do that, then.
Yeah, you can vote no, now, the reason we're not is, it's, it's not practical for my team to do that in the city, for us to bring everything. This is not, this is not Mayberry, I mean, you gotta let us, you gotta let my people do their job.
Well, you just had, you just had Oliver Branch decide they, they were ineffective and take it all down.
Well said, we'll vote, and if y'all vote no, then we won't do it, so, well, I respect what you're saying. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Eleven thousand dollars.
About eight thousand apiece. And that's a good point, thanks for bringing that up, um, as y'all know, we're, and that, I don't know if y'all catch everything that I say, but. That's why I said the easy thing is to not do this, okay, it would make my job easier, but I'm not gonna do that, I'm never gonna do what's easy for me, I'm gonna do what's best for the city. We can effectively use these, and, and just like Alderman Hoots is saying, we've already addressed that, we're not gonna put these things. They're not being used as a speeding deterrent everywhere in the city. As I stated, if you read it again, it says it has to meet all these criteria, has to be a situation where it's an issue with kids or pedestrians. Not just being used to deter speeding. But, um, but the, we didn't plan for this budgetarily, because we didn't have this ordinance. So what we'll do is, we're gonna try to address, uh, what, if we have funds to, to get started, we're gonna try to do it. But then next year, we'll have a budget line for speed humps, so that way it'll be, we'll plan for this and, um, but they're, uh, they're not cheap, they're eight thousand dollars apiece.
And how many, Eric, you think we're gonna put up right off the bat, you think?
Uh, I, like I told you last time, there's two places that we know that are problem areas. One of them is Castle Ridge, and again, when you talk about a hard, an unplanned hardship, Castle Ridge has a problem. Because Getwell's under construction, it's hard to make, uh, to get through there, so a lot of people use Castle Ridge as a cut through, they leave Getwell and go to, go to Davis Road. But when they go through there, um, the, the road, I'm trying to explain a picture to you, but it, it's very curvy. But I, like I told you, I went over there one Saturday, because citizens, as you know, Alderman Gallagher can tell you, we have many citizens that have expressed concern. And people haul tail through there. And it's dangerous, because you have a park in the center of where the road is, uh, there's a, a sidewalk there and a, and a, a park right there in the middle. So you have kids that are, uh, crossing the street right there, people are coming around College Road hauling butt right there, so, um, two right there. And then I, I mentioned Baird Drive, uh, Baird Drive is the, um, east west road just north of Central Parkway, where all the, the Southern Central Schools are. Um, it's dangerous for the kids, they're all crossing, there's three schools, they're all crossing the street right there. Um, taking, I, I can't tell you how many calls I've taken from Baird Drive citizens, and I agree with them, they're right. So we've already strategically looked at that, to where we, we, uh, believe we can solve that problem with three. You know, we don't need, it's a long road, but you don't need it, because you got stop signs on some of them, so we believe we can strategically solve that problem with three humps. So to answer your question, we're gonna try, we don't know for sure if we can afford that this year, we're gonna try to do five humps this year. And then next year, we'll budget according to, um, you know, what the needs are.
And just FYI, Charlie, they, we've sent the police out there, people run the stop signs all the time, uh, they do. Fifty, sixty miles an hour in a, in a twenty mile per hour zone, it's, it, it's a really bad issue out there. And we've, uh, we've put up slowed, uh, pedestrian park, uh, pedestrian crossings, signs and everything, trying to, to get it. So hopefully, I, and I think it will, hopefully this will work, but my constituents really, really want these things and have been asking for them for a long time.
I do too. I got the same issue on Clarendon, it'd been used as a cut through, and it's always been that way, it's always gonna be that way, because it's not, it's not based on construction where Getwell is temporary. I mean, Getwell's gonna get ten inch, maybe they'll put down there, but now it's a major thoroughfare that, you know.
Well, part of the research that I did yesterday, it, it said that when you put these things up, you're cut through streets, what they're gonna do is they're gonna say, okay. I'm gonna move over here to this street now, so then you, then you have to put them on the next street, so, I mean, uh. I'm just concerned of, you know, of, of two things about the expense of it, I mean, you know. Depending on how many we put up, I mean, we get into hiring more policemen to write tickets if we had to, you know, I mean, because it's, it's gonna add up.
Police could write as many tickets as they wanted to, if they just, they could, they could put a substation there and write as many as they wanted to, because.
Well, it doesn't matter how many police officers you hire, police cannot stop every speeder in the city. Um, police can't be everywhere at the same time, but when you put that speed hump there, it doesn't go home, speed hump is there twenty-four seven, so. Anyway, they're different than that, I hear what you're saying, but they're different than that, it's a more strategic, um, thing that we can use to, you know, to complement. Our police department to help with speeding, but.
Well, how about this, you know, since you, you've got some targets, I, where you wanna put them, and we're gonna have to come up with money this year to, you know, put those in. Can we pass this thing with the understanding that we'll reevaluate this next budget before we do, whether or not we want, if it's effective and how it's doing, and then, you know.
You can make a motion at any time to do anything you wanna do, you're an alderman.
We don't have to, we don't, we don't.
I don't, I don't support that, but you can do that, if you don't. Uh, we've already, and again, I want you to understand that, remind, y'all, I, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but. When I show up to these meetings and I make a recommendation to you, I didn't read the paper that morning, I've been studying it for a long time. I do my homework and my team, uh, comes together, I ask their input, so that, these are things that we've had. Input from the traffic committee, which is the planning director, the public works director, the police chief, uh, those are, are three bright people that have given input. Uh, like I said, I've studied it, I've done the same thing you have, I've been listening for ten years to people ask me to put speed bumps in the city. We've not done it, and, um, but again, that's why I've, I got my ears open, I'm listening to them, they want them, they're effective, so. Bottom line is, we didn't just like come up with this all of a su, we've studied this, and so my, my decision and recommendation to you is this ordinance is a good one. I'm asking you to pass it, and, uh, so if it passes, I'm not gonna be in support, unless something changes, if we, if we put these up. And we realize, wow, this is not working, of course, we're gonna come back to you, but that's what the traffic committee is for. And again, I want everybody to understand, I said I wasn't gonna try to convince everybody to agree with me anymore. But I want, I truly want people to understand that we can't, this is not Mayberry, we can't, every time somebody says, hey, would you stick a stop sign there? You know, we gotta let our people do their job, the day-to-day operations, we're a big city. You know, we can't bring everybody before the board every time we put a stop sign up or put a speed hump up, so. That's the reason we're doing an ordinance, so we can all know, you know, what the stipulations are. It's board approved, you've had the chance to express yourself, and then we vote on it, and, uh, and then we implement it. But it's, it's hard to do the day-to-day operations if you can't answer somebody's question. You know, does that make, I'm gonna say that again, it's hard, I know my department has to understand, it's very difficult to implement and to run this city. If you can't answer a citizen's questions, if I gotta say, well, no, I can't answer that, you have to come before the board, I mean, that's the reason we do what we do. We make ordinances, y'all make the ordinances, and I implement them. And I know we don't always agree, but that's why, whatever the full board agrees to is what we're gonna implement, so. Anyway, I'm, I hear everybody, I wanna make everybody happy, I really do, but, but I know that I have a job to do too, and we gotta have an ordinance that's practical. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries, next on our agenda is a resolution for a revised South Haven wrecker rotation policy.
This, uh, rotation policy was previously approved in, um, two thou, or approved over the years and revised over the years. Tonight's just one, uh, minor revision to it, uh, based on the request of the South Haven Police Department. There is provision that required the, um, uh, company to be its business within the, in the city for six months. Um, since that time, there's been, um, since situations where we've had a entity that would be a good addition to the policy, they ran to the wrecker rotation, they've, um, uh. But they have been in business, they had been in business for the six, the six month, uh, um, requirement, so tonight, they're just wanting to al, alter that provision. To not have the six month requirement, but everything else will still be adhered to under the policy as far as the insurance, the, um, business license and that type of thing. They just not have a physical location for six months within the city, so, like, the board approving that, that would be the revision to the wrecker policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have motion Alderman Kelly, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Cook.
I guess our first application is for subdivision approval, this will be for Serenity Point Phase Two. Um, it's gonna be on the north side of where you've got Futurnale Road, um, basically between Getwell and Tulahoma. What you see highlighted in green is the, the small portion that's proposed to be developed, it's right at the dead end of where Nail Road ha, ends now. Um, twelve point five, or four two acres, uh, this will be approximately, uh. I'm sorry, not approximately, this will be thirty-nine homes, uh, minimum lot sizes with the smaller cottage lots, they're sixty-two fifty, they do have a minimum heated square footage of twenty-two hundred, though. Um, it was all approved per the overall PUD that was, uh, approved back in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the only comments we had is we are in the process of designing Nail Road, as you well know, we had a task order to have Civil Link do that. Um, they, this development has graciously allowed us to come all the way onto their property to do the road building, um, since Entergy has come through, um, the Kids Country area. Um, so we're redesigning that, um, this section right here can access, uh, the portion they're developing via just a construction entrance right there at the end of Nail Road. So this is the last portion that we can gain access to from the Nail Road side, um, before the, the actual road goes through. Uh, we also had further discussion on rental homes allowed, uh, that was one of the conditions on this PUD, which they did add into the PUD text. We also asked them to put it on the plat, um, which will be approved, um, and signed off on by, um, the Board of Aldermen, I mean, I'm sorry, the Mayor and, uh. Andrea, as well as the Planning Commission, they did agree to that as well, um, so, once that's done, um, Planning Commission voting unanimously in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, I move you approve item number one on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is a design review application for a new bank to be located on the northeast corner of Airways Boulevard and Guthrie Drive. Uh, you'll see the aerial photo right there, there was an existing bank there, um, kind of outdated architecturally, they decided to raise it to the ground and come up with a new one. Um, so the submittal you have tonight is the new building, uh, modern style, it had, we had no comments regarding the building. We did have a few comments regarding the size and the, the design of the landscaping, uh, and we had some comments regarding the decorative lighting that we require with all new developments. Um, just before coming in here, they did submit to me the modern style decorative lighting that they wanted, uh, it is, uh, acceptable to the Planning Commission. So that was the only comment that wasn't, uh, finalized at the commission meeting, so with that, they recommend full approval from the Board of Aldermen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item number two on the planning agenda. Second.
On item two, we have a motion, Alderman Jerome, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our third application, as you will see, um, from the rendering that was, that was just up there, the old El Patron building that's across the street has been purchased. Uh, they have been working with my office as well as the Fire Department and the Building Department in terms of trying to do a renovation plan to the existing structure. It has been determined by the Fire and the Building Departments that it can be renovated as opposed to being torn down, that is the option they would like to go with. So what you have in front of you tonight is an application for the West End Tax Incentive Program. Uh, improvements include, uh, a lot of structural improvements on the interior, uh, new roofing and painting on the exterior, new landscaping, uh. New parking lots, um, being redone, uh, it is proposed to be what's called the American Deli. Um, they did submit to us their business summary, and by their own words, it looks as though this is about a five hundred thousand dollar investment on behalf of the property owner. So they're requesting, um, to be able to move forward with the tax incentive, uh, package approved by the Board of Aldermen.
I'm gonna make that motion, we approve that.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Kelly, and I'd like to discuss a little bit, what a, 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 another success story. I mean, here we go, I mean, it, it doesn't happen overnight, uh, but we have our incentive package that we've been trying to really step up and market even more. Here we go, one by one, you know, we had the Wendy's, uh, redone a few years ago, and, and this is, um. This building, you know, it's been so many things over the years, so to have this kind of investment in there is, is so good for our original business district in the West End. So I just, I, I publicly thank the, the investors that are doing this, and we welcome American Deli right there.
So, I, I'm curious, uh, five hundred thousand is, is that how much they're spending in upgrading it, or is that?
In the upgrades to it, yes.
Was that the cost of the land, uh?
No, it's, it's the cost of the upgrade, there's a lot of work, uh, that needs to be done there, it, this has been an ongoing process. And, and before this one ever came into play, we had several others looking at this that did not want to put in what was gonna be required by the poli, by the police and fire, but by the fire and the Building Department. There is a massive amount of plumbing, electrical, HVAC work that has to be done, the parking lot is a mess, there's no landscaping, they've already taken off the. They've already taken off the, the front portion of the building so they can open it back up. And it's everything from new windows to, I mean, it's, it's everything. Yes, it's an overhaul. Uh, it was a disaster on the interior. They actually started working heavily on it prior to coming to our office. We put a stop on them and said, look, before you start any of that, let's look at it, see if it's worth even saving. Um, and one of the investors actually has another business on Southview right behind it. So he found an outside investor and decided to go in with him because he wanted to revamp it and make it an eatery for someplace for his employees to go. So it's a, it's a local investment.
Excited about it?
I am too. I've heard good things.
So it's not like you're just approving the plans?
We're just approving, yes. Yes.
They come back, they'll, you'll prove it, the actual abatement, um, for the city, seven-year, seven-year, uh, tax abatement for the...
After we make sure they've honored the, the envelope.
Yeah, they gotta, the maintenance, the maintenance, just so we're clear. I think there's been some confusion in the past with people. It's a little bit of difference between taxes now and the, and the increased value, which is still a significant amount. But, um, you know, just, we'll have that committed to the plan tonight. So there's no confusion about the ent- entities later on.
The co-joint.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's...
And just to report on that, we have, I've had that discussion with several potential investors and, and when I tell them that, they still, it's a significant, that it is a significant incentive. It is, it's a worthy incentive. And every incentive that, that, that is allowed by state laws in place, you know, to bring, uh, to bring, bring, uh, business back to our original business district. So that's, that's a, a great, item three is a great thing. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
That motion carries.
I do have one more item that's not on the agenda. Um, we did have a request. It actually started with the Fire Department, but it's now a request from the overall developer of Silo Square. Uh, Front Street, right now is a private drive, which is, um, behind all the out parcels along Getwell Road. Like, so behind Tequila, behind Georgia Blues, there's a road. Uh, it's actually a private road at this time. It's been built to city specs. Um, it's forty-eight feet wide for the actual easement. Um, but right now, from addressing and, um, accessibility concerns, the Fire Department was requesting that it become a public street. So we sent it over to Civil Link and had them go and take a look at it or to make a determination that it was built up to city specs. Um, we've confirmed with Brian Hill that it was. A portion of it's already had the overlay on it. The second portion that doesn't have it on there, he will be placing that, um, overlay, the final lift on it, uh, when it's time, once let it fly and everything finishes construction on that side. Uh, but the request is now to make it a public right-of-way. Um, from my office's standpoint, it's more beneficial for us to have it as an actual city road in terms of, uh, you know, looking at it for no parking, uh, addressing the development that's coming in behind it, addressing it to the road, actual Front Street, instead of putting confusing roadways on it from like Getwell Road and things like that. Uh, and from, uh, the Fire Department's, uh, accessibility and response times without getting confused between a public street and a private street. Um, it was more beneficial for us to take it as a city right-of-way. So the request, um, and I have the letter, like I said, I couldn't get it in time, but this is the official letter from the, um, developer. Uh, and we do have confirmation from the Fire Department that they requested as well. So we are asking that we, uh, approve Front Street as a city right-of-way, and then we will have it plotted and recorded with the Chancellor's Office.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
So there's a, there's a code to be put out?
There's a portion of it. So once you get past Tequila's, there's a drop-off where it still needs the final lift and all that. So, yes.
Most of it does have, I went and looked at it too when she brought it to my attention. Most of it has, has a final lift.
And I did confirm with Brian, we'll put together a subdivision agreement and a call so we can bond it in the meantime. So it'll be done just like every other road. But, um, like I said, we just wanna take it from a private to a public for benefits for the city.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And that motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Um, move through a few items quickly for you. Just an update, um, as we talked about last time. We moved our city Christmas parade, uh, that the Chamber of Commerce, uh, organized. We moved that back to a daytime event. Uh, we did that for, um, for the safety of our kids. Uh, and the report is that, uh, it was very successful. We had a really good turnout. Uh, it was really nice. It was safer. You know, you, people could see, um, you could talk to people. You could see their faces on the side of the road. We had so many people reaching out. It was really a, it was a good event. So, um, anyway, I think it, um, it was a good move to move it to daytime hours. I think everybody had a good time. Um, we did have it on the same day as the St. Jude Run, so I think next year we're gonna try to work around that. Uh, but it was a, a great turnout and a, and a really good event. Uh, just reminding everybody, the Southern Lights, um, uh, display that we have at Central Park, uh, is, uh, still, uh, underway through, um, uh, New Year's Eve. And, uh, it's a great event. Uh, just to remind everybody, charitable organizations work the gate, and so the city allows those charities to take that money for their organizations as they work the gates. So it's a, it's a, a great thing for charities. They, they're, they really appreciate that opportunity, uh, and it's a great event. Y'all, the board knows, we, uh, updated some of the equipment a couple of years ago. Uh, made it modern and, and new and nice, so it's, it's really special. It's a good thing, you know, if you have your kids or grandkids, you wanna put them in the car, you know, get some coffee and hot chocolate and, and go through there. It's really, it's really fun. It's really special. So, anyway, I hope everybody will take advantage of that. Street paving update. Um, we have, um, been successful. Y'all know in the fall, we like to get a head start on our streets because the weather's so good, you know, in October and a lot of times in November. So we try to, uh, we give the contractor a list of, a goal to meet certain streets, uh, in the fall and before the asphalt plant shut down. So that Lehman Roberts has done a really good job with that. We've had a lot of those streets done. We're gonna try to finalize that. Uh, as a reminder, you may, for the citizens, when you see heavy patching, um, over the years, you know, it's just one of those common things where people say, well, you're not gonna pave the road again. You're just patching it again, you know, like y'all always done. So when you see a big, huge square patch, that means that it's gonna be resurfaced. It means that, uh, before we resurfaced the road, we had to, uh, fill in the soft spots. And so when you see that, uh, Sweeney Road is a good example of that. You have that all down Sweeney. Uh, the reason is it's just waiting on, uh, the contractors to come back and, and put a, uh, fresh, um, uh, cover of asphalt on that. So, anyway, we made good progress paving our streets, uh, this fall. Um, neighborhood parks progress. Y'all know that in our Parks Enhancement Plan, a large part of that is, uh, improving our neighborhood parks. A lot of that has been done. Uh, we got kids out there enjoying, you know, people walking and enjoying it already. So it's, it's accomplishing that goal of improving our neighborhoods. Uh, new playground equipment is a budget line that we have already in our budget. It's not the tourism tax. It's a, it's a general fund line item. So we believe that if we replace the playground equipment in a certain number of, uh, neighborhood parks annually, that we stay on top of that. Uh, because as time goes by, they all, you know, deteriorate and have to keep replacing them. So, um, there's several that have been done. And, uh, Guthrie Park on Guthrie Drive is about to have new playground equipment, and at Greenbrook Softball Complex, there's about to be a new playground, uh, out there. So, anyway, a lot, lot of progress going on. Good stuff with that. Getwell Road South widening update. Y'all know that the biggest, uh, road project in our city right now is the Getwell South, uh, widening project from Church Road to Star Landing. Uh, contractor has made tremendous progress. They started in February this year. If you haven't been over there, it's starting to look like a, a five-lane road. I mean, they really have, uh, done a really good job. Civil Link is managing that for us and it looks really good. And we're gonna get some benefits of that. It's projected to be done in the early part of twenty-five. Uh, we think that, um, we could possibly be done in late twenty-four or kind of fall twenty-four. Um, we're gonna be pressing for that. Um, so it's really gonna make a big difference. And, uh, some of the benefits will be enjoyed before it's finalized. You know, as they get some of the lanes surfaced, that'll, it'll be functional, uh, in some of the key intersections at College and Star Landing. So we're gonna get some benefit of the road before then. But, but the report tonight is, you know, that's the biggest project. It's a fourteen-million-dollar project. Uh, we applied for NPO money in two thousand fifteen, federal money. Um, so it's very rewarding for us to see that, you know, uh, come into, are, are under construction with making a tremendous amount of progress. And that's my update tonight. Uh, we'll move on past that. The next thing on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Uh, Mr. Nick Manley again.
Had one quick item. Uh, it's a resolution for a budget amendment that came up yesterday afternoon, uh, late. It's, uh, just, a budget amendment is reflecting monies that were budgeted in FY twenty-three. Uh, that'll be expended in FY twenty-four for park equipment and sit, uh, South Haven Fire Department uniforms. Send the authorization to approve that budget amendment, um, as presented tonight. And, uh, like I said, it's just, it's transferring money that was budgeted in FY twenty-three, um, to FY twenty-four for the uses of parks equipment and, um, uh, South Haven Fire Department uniforms. No additional costs or expenses, um, reflected.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on the state. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two claims dockets.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve docket number one in the amount of three million, two-hundred-twenty-three thousand, six-hundred-seventy-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, including demand checks. Second.
On docket one, we have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries on docket one.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve docket number two in the amount of nineteen thousand, two-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Second.
On docket two, we have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it. Motion carries, uh, and the need this evening is, uh, discussing potential claims and litigation bound against the city, economic development within the city, police security, perci- uh, ace, police security procedure, and interdepartmental personnel with no action and, uh, police personnel with potential action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
Simu. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it. Motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.